I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I'm gonna do a quick roll call. Michelle Williams?
Here.
Thomas Fitting?
Here.
Richard Gordon? I think I saw Richard.
He's here. You're on mute, Richard.
Here.
Hey, Richard. Okay, Nicole Davidson? No, Nicole?
No.
Okay, we don't have, okay, so Nicole Davidson is absent. Mary Salvatore? Is absent? Or is she here?
Oh, absent.
Absent. Okay, and let's see Mr. Baumback. So, let the record show that we're seating Mr. Baumback and get to it. So, just as a reminder to everyone, please remember that only the commission members will be unmuted. And we can hear and see everything that's going on around you. Board members and staff are gonna be unmuted the whole time by executive order. Everyone must state their name and where they are from prior to speaking. During public delegations, all lines will remain open for comment. Please wait to be called on. Prior to speaking, once you have finished speaking, please mute your microphone. And during each agenda, agenda item, only the board, staff, and presenters will be unmuted and able to speak at a time. Only one person can speak at a time. And all votes will be done by roll call. And only hosts are permitted to share the screens at this time. And the entire meeting will be automatically recorded to Zoom by Zoom and once the meeting will cease, the, everyone is to log out. Additions to the agenda, are there, there's one addition. It looks like we're looking for an appointment to the Regional Planning Commission liaison. So, I've been to one of these regional planning meetings and it was kinda interesting to go there. It's a meeting of all the thing commissioners from the local areas and they get together and talk about different planning activities that are going on in various in the various towns around ours. And we would be looking for somebody to volunteer, or if someone wanted to do that, we would certainly be happy to have someone representing East Lime.
Mr. Chair, just in your materials on the web, there is a, the invitation to their next meeting, which is January 25th at 7:00 PM. It'll be, well, obviously virtually over Zoom.
Great. Do any of the members of the commission? Would anyone like to volunteer for this? Okay, I'll-
I'd be happy to do it if nobody else wants to, but I don't wanna take an opportunity away from someone else who would like to do it.
We can send multiple people. Yeah, I mean, I'd be willing to go too if nobody else wanted to go. So. Okay, well, Michelle, it's not, it seems like you, you have, you have a bit on your plate too for continuing on, continuing on with the P O C D stuff. Do you want me to go?
Either way, doesn't matter. And we, I don't know, the formalities, we could, we could split them, whatever you wanna do.
The Regional Planning Commission typically meets once a year.
Oh.
You know, you know-
Sign me up.
It's a great one to volunteer for.
Yeah.
And actually, I think you would be the perfect person to go. Only, and, and, and especially because I feel like everybody there is gonna wanna take a keen interest in our P O C D efforts.
Yeah, I agree.
And I feel like you would be probably a really, really good, probably the best resources, resource we have in that regard, so.
I'll be eating on that as well.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much for that, Michelle.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so on to public delegations. Public delegations is a time when members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain items. Issues or concerns related to approved wetland permits.
That should be planning.
Say again?
I said that should actually read subdivision permits or subdivision approvals.
Okay. Issues concerning subdivision approvals, in-house proposals, or general topics of discussion are, are open to comment. Agenda items, referrals, applications, subject to a decision by the commission, a public hearing, or in litigation may not be discussed. Members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comments during delegations. Jen, do we have anyone here that is-
We have one member of the public. Barbara Johnston has called in on her phone. I just wanna check with Barbara and see if she's here to listen, or if she has a comment to make. Barbara, can you hear me? Hi, Barbara.
It's Barbara Johnston, 35 Seacrest Avenue. Basically, thanks very much. Yeah, I'm just here to listen, as usual.
Okay. Just checking. Thanks, Barbara.
Yep. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak at public delegation?
She's our only member of the public right now.
Oh, okay, great. So, let's move on to reports, communications. I'm seeing none received.
Other than the invitation to the Regional Planning Agency.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. And I believe they did just have a zoning meeting. Is that true?
Um, hi, candidate December 1. Do you want me to speak on that?
Yes, please, if you would. Thank you.
Yeah, main issues, they approved the affordable housing project at Bride Book with some amendments to the zoning. They reduced the amount of space for the housing project and increased the amount of open space. They denied the text amendment, amendment request revision by landmark to the zoning regulations. They rejected that. To want to replace the preliminary site plan to have a master plan. I think we discussed that at a prior meeting. And there was a special permit that was for mixed-use development at Boston Post Road. I guess they'll have a hearing or discussion at a further, at a later time. No, that was basically it. Major.
Hey, thank you very much. Thank you for attending that. Do we have, does anyone have the schedule handy for when the next meeting is and who our representative would be?
The next meeting is January 21st, and I think I put a liaison schedule on the website on today's meeting materials. I think. Nope, I didn't.
Okay, so we, um, let's coordinate that one and make sure that if, if you wanna send that out, could you send that out to everybody, the, the schedule one, one time on email, if you don't mind?
I can.
And we'll work together to try to make sure that somebody is able to go. Um, let's see. So that brings us to Ex officio, Mr. Slerno. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things. We're in the middle of budget season, so all the, a lot of the department heads are already meeting with the first selectman right now. We'll be expecting the budget presented by the first selectman in the next month or two. The public safety building's in the middle of full renovation right now. The contractor so far is actually anticipating being able to complete early. So they're aiming right now for July, which would be nice, summer opening. This board of selectmen, and I'm part of this, formed the FIRE subcommittee to go over the FIRE department study that you guys added into your P O C D. We're also looking into, wanna have a discussion with about volunteerism. Volunteer has been on the decline. And whether we need to have a FIRE chief doing both, overseeing both departments who works for the town directly, or FIRE admin. So my subcommittee's meeting tomorrow, and those are some of the things we're gonna be discussing.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Gashel, as planning director, do you have anything?
I have nothing at this time.
Okay, subcommittees, let's, Ms. Williams, planning, plan of conservation and development.
Yeah, I think since the last meeting, the plan was officially adopted by OPM. I don't think we had that to report at our final meeting of the year, so that's exciting news. And later this week, we'll be putting our heads together on the planned rollout of communicating the P O C D to the other applicable boards and commissions. You'll remember, as a group here, we discussed one of us attending various other board and commission meetings to just give everybody an overview and talk about the different items that address their purview as kind of a way to start taking it from planning into execution. So, I hope to have a more thorough update on that for you at the next meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Is that gonna be all the, all the members of, of the subcommittee, or just-
Yeah, we should talk about that and see if they're still interested in serving. I don't know. I mean, it's just an unofficial appointed subcommittee. Do members expire and need to be, it's so informal. I don't know how that works.
You could continue to, you know, with the same members, you could add, see if there's any more interest, anyone else wanna participate. You could point a whole new subcommittee.
I say, I, I think, I, I like the idea of just continuing on with, with who, who we've had on the committee and maybe opening it up like you, like you have both, both suggested. I think that sounds like a good idea.
All right, excellent. So I think we'll probably try to get another meeting in with the existing group, and then maybe as we go to the different commissions and stuff, they'll wanna appoint a representative from their boards to, you know, cover off on the items that apply to them, hopefully.
Yeah, that would be great. Excellent. Okay, so we're looking forward to that. Thank you. On to chairman. I don't have a lot to report other than thanks to town staff for sending out the 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 notes from the, the planning committee materials that was posted on the UConn website and for the bylaws. Thank you for sending both of those out. I'm hoping that all the commission members get a chance to review the, review those materials. It kinda gives us a little bit of framework for how we're supposed to be operating. And, and I've noticed just by looking at the bylaws a little bit, we, we're may wanna consider doing some of the updates. But we can, we can talk about that some more in the future.
You'd like to put that on our next agenda for as a discussion item?
I, yeah, I think, I think we should put it on the agenda for a discussion item. And if I could ask the subcommittee members to take a couple of minutes to review the bylaws, it would, it would help speed things along. They're, they're not very long. I could say for sure that there's a few things that we're not doing exactly the way the bylaws we're talking about, and we can get into that. So I don't know if we wanna change the way we're doing our business or change the bylaws. I don't know, but we should probably have it some kind of a discussion and
They are on the agenda under Old Business today.
Oh, well. Maybe we'll, well, when, when we get to that, we'll bring it up again and see if any has any ideas about what, if they wanna continue discussion today or have it for next week. So. I didn't see that on there yet. Thank you for pointing that out. Which, that's all I have, and that brings us to acceptance of meeting minutes. We have several here. We have meeting minutes from December 1st. Do we, do I hear a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from December 1st, 2020?
I approve the meeting minutes, yeah. I made a motion to approve the meeting, meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fitting. And any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Let's go to a vote. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Thomas Fitting?
Aye.
Richard Gordon?
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. And Brian Baumback?
Aye.
Let the record show, 1, 2, 3, 5, 0, 0. The-
Mr. Chair, before you go on, we also had, you could, Elizabeth Allen is in attendance. You could see her. If you'd like. You don't have to.
Uh, we're like, well into the meeting here.
Very well.
Okay, so that brings us to the meeting minutes for December. Wait, is there another one from December 1st, or there's two from December 10th, right?
December 10th, yeah.
Okay, so, meeting minutes from December 10th, special meeting number one. Do I hear a motion to approve the special meeting minutes from December 10th, 2020, special meeting one?
Still moved.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Do I hear a second?
I second. Richard Gordon.
Richard Gordon, thank you, Mr. Gordon. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna move to vote. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Thomas Fitting?
Aye.
Richard Gordon?
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. Brian Baumback?
Aye.
Let the record show unanimous approval of the meeting minutes. What's brings us to meeting minutes of December 10th, special meeting number two. Do I hear a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
Motion to approve December 10th, meeting two.
Thank you, Mr. Fitting. Do I hear a second?
A second, Richard Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Michelle Williams?
Aye.
Thomas Fitting?
Aye.
Richard Gordon?
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. Brian Baumback?
Aye.
Okay, let the record show, we are approving special meeting minutes, special meeting two, meeting minutes from December 10th, 2020. Which brings us to public hearings, and tonight we have no public hearings. And we have one subdivision, re-subdivision pending, application of Kristen T. Clark, P E for English Harbor Asset Management LLC owner applicant, application for a four-lot re-subdivision of approximately 3.8 acres of land zoned RU40 located at 22 and 24 Upper Kensington Drive, East Lime, Connecticut, assessment map. 40.0 lots, 22 and 23. So we have, Mr. Gashel, thank you, I, I believe you, I saw your memo on the, on the website. Thank you for drafting that. Has everyone had a chance to review the memo? I'm seeing some heads nod. Should we wanna just jump into it, Mr. Gashel?
Sure.
Yeah.
So at the last meeting, as you said, you had asked me to draft a memo, which I provided with a number of findings. I think, as you all know, the duration of which we've listened to the application and heard it was quite lengthy. But I think my fifth finding down, I'm starting on page one, really speaks to the applications compliance with the subdivision regulations themselves, so I'll start there.
Did we lose Gary to freezing?
He froze.
Yeah, I think he's frozen. Yeah. He just sent a text. Computer crashed.
All right. Well, I believe he was getting ready to just read through. Is there any way you can take back the screen share? Who, who has the? Is that you, Jen, with the screen share?
Yeah, hold on just a second. Gary's coming back in. You want me to turn off the screen share?
Oh, no, I was gonna say somebody else could pick it up and run with it.
I'm back, Mr. Chair.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll just pick up where I left off, then the, 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 the finding at the bottom of page one in regards to where the application is found to meet the requirements of the East Lime subdivision regulations. Section 3-4 in regards to the plan of development, found that the proposed subdivision is located completely within RU40 zoning district adjacent to existing residential lots zoned RU40 and SUE. The proposed subdivision continues to follow the pattern of development characteristic of the existing residential development. And therefore found to conform to the plan of development. Section 5-4 of the regulations, the sanitation report, which was long awaited, is indicated in exhibit BBB. The email correspondence from Danielle Holmes RS, I'm sorry, REHS, RS, or Sanitarium dated December 10th, 2020, indicates that the proposed lots are able to be served by subsurface sewage disposal systems. And section 5-5, the water supply report, as indicated again in exhibit BBB, email correspondence from Danielle Holmes dated December 10th, 2020, indicates the proposed lots are able to be served by onsite water supply wells. Section 5-2-2E and 6-8 stormwater management plan is indicating exhibit BB, is a memo from Victor Benny, our town engineer, dated October 19th, 2020, indicated that the waiver of stormwater management report demonstrates that the water quality of the receiving aquifer wetland or water course will not be affected and that the proposed development will not cause or exacerbate downstream flooding. I'll note that that, I believe that's a typo because they did not request a waiver. As you know, the application started out as a four-lot subdivision, and thus was reduced down to three. Therefore, the town engineer felt that the stormwater could be handled under those provisions. So I believe it's within the commission's discretion to modify the plan to conform, or it can without the waiver request actually having been in writing, as the subdivision was reduced in the number of lots. That's just my, my professional opinion. But that said, section 5-2-2G erosion sedimentation control plan, again, is indicated by exhibit BB dated, I'm sorry, October, it says 23rd, 2020. I don't know what, that's a typo, because the previous one, just give me a second, I'll double check the exhibit list. Vivid BB was dated October 19th, 2020. Question read dated October 19th, 2020, memo from Victor Benny, P E, town engineer, indicates the proposed plan was updated to contain generalized erosion and sedimentation control modes. And as such, the appropriate notes, details, and provisions regarding the erosion control measures are adequate to control accelerated erosion, sedimentation, and reduce the danger from stormwater runoff on the proposed site, which have been incorporated into the proposed plan. Therefore, the plan of commission may hereby certify that this oil and erosion sedimentation control plan complies with the requirements and objectives of the subdivision regulations. Section 5-6, the pesticide report, as evidenced by the applicant's testimony during public hearing, there have been no known regular applications of pesticides on the subject site currently or historically. In addition, the site was previously approved for two building lots as part of a previous subdivision application. Section 5-8, the archaeological survey, again, as evidenced by the design report in exhibit A, the archaeological survey was provided to the commission as part of the Nottingham Hills Phase 1 and 3 subdivisions, and was incorporated into the public hearing record by testimony of the applicant. In addition, the site was previously approved of the construction, again, of two single-family dwellings. As such, there are no archaeological resources issues on the site. Section 6-2, lot design specifications, as evidenced by exhibit CC, correspondence from Bill Mahollen, zoning official, dated October 23rd, 2020. And the exhibit U, correspondence from attorney Paul Gary dated August 26th, 2020, and exhibit KKK, letter from Mark Zamarka, Esquire Town Attorney to Bill Mahollen, zoning official, indicate the proposed subdivision meets the lot design specifications under the conservation development by design, CDD pursuant to section 23 of the zoning regulations, as well as section 6-2 of the East Lime subdivision regulations. Therefore, the proposed subdivision complies with all applicable zoning regulations for the purposes of the subdivision of land. Here's, this is gonna be a little lengthy, and I apologize, but I think it's a thorough explanation of how the application meets the open space requirements. As demonstrated by the design report in exhibit A, it identifies Nottingham Hills subdivision as being a division of 107.82 acres, and the open space provided totaled 41.35 acres. Based on the subdivision regulation requirement of 30% open space or 32.34 acres, the subdivision had exceeded and required open space by 9.1 acres. As of the date of the pending application, subsequent to the application, the applicant conveyed portions of lot 19, approximately 0.51 acres, and lot 21, approximately 1.27 acres, to the property that was in the process of being conveyed to the East Lime Land Trust. The combined total, 37.99 acres, which had since been transferred to the East Lime Land Trust as of December 30th, 2020. That was recorded in volume 1046, page 120. Upon recalculating the open space, it now totals 79.34 acres of the subdivision's 107.82 acres. As such, approximately 73.5% of the subdivision's land is now in open space, but only 30% or 32.3 acres is required. In addition, exhibit U, correspondence from attorney Paul Garrity dated October 26th, 2020, indicates that the Nottingham Hills subdivision has, quote, "banked", end quote, "land" to use for open space as evidence in the minutes of the planning commission dated November 16th, 2010. See exhibit FF. Wherein excess open space, 10 acres, was provided by agreement with the Town of East Lime Planning Commission on the condition that it was done so with the reserve right that the 10 acres could be used in the future calculations on future applications. Further, pursuant to the memorandum dated February 1st, 2010, from Mark E. Block, Esquire, to myself, the director of planning, as provided in exhibit U, correspondence from attorney Paul Garrity dated August 26th, 2020, the open space requirement is based on the entire tract and not subsequent re-subdivisions. Therefore, adequate open space has not only been dedicated, but has been provided in an amount that exceeds the minimum required under the subdivision regulations. As such, the development, in my opinion, has met the open space obligations. And then in regards to flooding, as demonstrated by exhibit Z, the Nottingham Hills re-subdivision plan, the five-sheet set dated January 29th, 2020, revised to October 19th, 2020, which reduces the proposed subdivision of land from four lots to three lots. And then again, exhibit BB dated October 19th, 2020, again, as a typo, the memo from Victor Benny, P E, town engineer, indicates that the proposed plan, the drainage summary met the overall intent of section 6-8 of the East Lime subdivision regulations. And the site development will not adversely affect the water quality of downstream water features or exacerbate any downstream flooding. Not, those were my findings. I would note that there was a recommendation, I believe, by the town engineer- there was a recommendation, I believe, by the town engineer for an erosion sedimentation control bond, an amount of approximately $3,000 to cover ENS. And the other conditions there were relatively straightforward boilerplate standard operating procedure for the staff and the developer if it goes forward. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Yeah, I just in regards to the type, the typos I have here, there was two. And then there was another one above that that I didn't quite get. There was one from five dash two dash two. And then six dash nine, I think those were both referring to a date of October 19th instead of the 23rd.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And then what was the one before that? There was, I think, another typo.
We had section five dash two E and two G. So two E indicated the correct date, October 19th, and then in five dash two dash two G, the date's incorrect. And then again, under
Six two?
No, section six dash nine.
Six dash nine.
Again, it references exhibit BB, but it's not dated October 23rd. It's October 19th.
Okay. So in order to take this memo as a, our and make a motion of it, how do we, how do we note those corrections?
I think you could just add into the the proposed resolution, just add in that based on the record before it was spec to the application finds the application to be in conformance with the subdivision based on the findings as indicated in the memo. You could, you know, maybe after the word findings, based on the above findings as corrected. Liberations. I don't think you have to get too, too specific, but you're still gonna reference the memo as corrected.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gashel.
Can I just speak to that correction?
Yes, I was gonna open it up. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. So the, to complicate things further, our exhibit list has Victor Benny's correspondence BB dated October 19th, but the letter in the exhibit is dated the 23rd. So the 23rd is in fact correct.
Correct. Well, I stand corrected. And that has to change on our exhibit list as well.
So the, so the memo appears to be right.
Well, in some spots. The opposite spots that we thought.
Oh, so it's five two two E is the incorrect one.
Correct. It should be October 23rd, based on the exhibit BB date that's on the memo.
Okay.
Where are, the exhibit list that I was referencing as I drafted this has it written down as October 19th, so that would be why. I would also note that in the resolution, the planned date, so while Mr. Benny's review is dated back in October, and the planned date has been revised through to December 9th, 2020, that was in the effort to address the ledge light health concerns that did not affect any of the proposed drainage.
Okay, so we're, are we comfortable with the corrections now?
So can I just clarify? Is the only correction to the five dash two two E, the date of October 23rd?
Yes.
Okay.
But did we?
So.
Sorry, that's my, yep. Take it back.
That was the only change.
Michelle, did you have something more you wanted to?
I did not. I wanted to suck the words back into my mouth.
Does anyone else have any thoughts or comments regarding this memo? It looks like it's complete to me. It looks like with those corrections, I'm satisfied with it. Does anyone else have any concerns? Okay, so you read the bulk of it there. So let's move to a vote. Now, are you, Mr. Baumback, are you planning on voting for this?
Yeah, I'm gonna recuse, I'm gonna recuse myself because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay. All right, let the record show that Mr. Baumback is recusing himself from the vote. Let's see, is there any other discussion before we move ahead? Nope, hearing, hearing no further discussion. Do I hear, do I hear a motion to approve the application referenced in the memo as 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 corrected?
I'll make that motion. Would you like me to read the, from the proposed resolution, or can I just reference the memo?
If you, if you wanted to read that whole thing, that would be okay, but I think it would suffice to.
If we don't need to, I won't.
That's a lot of reading.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read through it beforehand. I didn't catch the, the date typos, but it looked pretty complete to me.
Yes.
So we have a, a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
So is that, I'm not sure who that was. I think there was two.
We're both.
Mr. Fitting, second, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On the motion, are you incorporating the conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Is, are the conditions, the conditions are part of the memo, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, right, that's, okay. So yes. Okay, so let's go to vote. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Michelle Williams.
Aye.
Tom Fitting.
Aye.
Rich, Richard Gordon.
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. Let the record show. One, two. Five, five zero zero?
Four.
Correct.
Four.
Four zero zero.
Four.
Yeah, sorry. Let the, let the record show that the motion passed approving that subdivision. Trying to my spot here. Okay, so that brings us to zoning referrals, which there are none. Municipal referrals, which are none. Old business bylaws. So when I was reviewing these, what I noticed was some of the, some of the, some of the duties and responsibilities that were detailed to be carried out by the secretary are pretty much done by town staff, which is great. I mean, I, I'm really happy that the town staff is, is helping and, you know, keeping everything straight. Because that is a big job. That was the one thing that I noticed that the bylaws talked about that, that is a little bit different than the way we're actually operating. So does anyone else have any other ideas or things they wanna discuss related to the bylaws? Do we wanna take the next month or so to read over and familiarize ourselves with these a little bit more and then bring it up as in a further discussion in the future?
I would like that extra time. I have not had a chance to review them as thoroughly as I would like for discussion tonight.
I kind of agree with that, too. I, I kind of breezed through them a little bit and I feel like they deserve a little bit more attention than, than, than the five minutes that I spent reading them last night. So I think with that, if everybody could just take a couple of minutes, maybe take some notes on it or just write down some ideas or anything or, you know, whatever, whatever helps you remember any of your ideas about it. And we'll try to have a more in-depth discussion about this the next meeting. With that, onto new business, we have an application of Barry and Kathleen Steamer, owner applicant for a one lot re-subdivision of approximately 3.11 acres of land zoned RU40, located at 40 Spring Rock Road, East Lime Assessor's Map, 19 Lot 97. So I see here on the, on the agenda that we're talking about possibly setting a public hearing for February of 2021. I'm just wondering if that's gonna be enough time and Mr. Gashel, did you wanna comment?
Yeah, so I checked with, because of the scheduling issue, I checked with ledge light to kind of see where they're at in terms of their review process. Obviously, as the last application we saw lingered on because of a bit of that, that backlog. They're about six weeks out. So that said, we have 65 days within which we have to schedule the public hearing, 35 days to conduct it, and upon its close, we have 65 to render a decision. And again, because the application was made during COVID, you have an extra 90 days on it if need be. It is a one lot re-subdivision. I don't think we'll need the full time, knock on wood. But I looked, I did some math. We have until March 18th. That's the 65 day limit. So our next regular scheduled meeting is February 9th, and that then followed by a March 9th meeting as well. So we could schedule the public hearing for March 9th in hopes that we have a full review back from ledge light. We're within our statutory timeframe.
And yeah, I kind of, I kind of like that idea only because of the last application that we just closed today. The amount of time that it had taken for ledge light to get back and forth.
I think we, we exhausted all of our statutory time plus the 90 days.
Right. So it's either that or we get to that point and we deny the application for something that's not in our control or their control. So I, I kind of like the idea of scheduling it for March, so let's, let's do that. Let's make it March 9th. All right, so that closes the new business and, which brings us to the item of adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, this is Joe Wren. I'm just the agent representing the applicant, the steamers for that one lot re-subdivision. Did you want to, did you want just a brief overview of the project? I know it's an automatic public hearing because it's a re-subdivision, but I could just give a two-minute run over the plan if you'd like.
Mr. Chair, I would respectfully decline, Mr. Wren, I, because it's going to public hearing, they're not allowed to have the discussion outside of that. Even though, no overview, I just think it's a safer procedurally.
That's fine. I just wanted to ask the question. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the offer. Thank you very much. And, and we, we are looking forward to hearing the full presentation during a public hearing. So thank you for the offer.
Mr. Chairman, the zoning representative is here.
Good evening. How are you today?
Just wanted to mention that I was here.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your time and hope you enjoyed our meeting.
I did.
Great, thank you. All right, so now I'm on item 12, I think, adjournment.
Chairman.
Do I, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I submit a motion to adjourn, Richard Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Do I hear a second?
Second motion.
Mr. Fitting, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, with that, let's go to the vote to adjourn. Michelle Williams.
Aye.
Thomas Fitting.
Aye.
Richard Gordon.
Aye.
Kirk Scott, aye. And Brian Baumback.
Aye.
Okay, let the record show it is 7:50. And the meeting is adjourned.